So it looks like the meeting is now streaming live on Facebook.
Okay.
We had a few technical difficulties, so right now we're just live on Facebook and we will try to upload the video onto YouTube later. We also have a backup copy which we're saving in our cloud, so we should be set to go.
All right, so we are, what I think I'd like for us to do now is BJ, if you would identify the participants on each side of the meeting as opposed to trying to have people identify themselves, it gets a little awkward doing that, let's try it.
I'd be happy to. On the council side, we have Mary Kate Hasselwander, who is council staff. Henry Fitz will be giving the presentation. He is now located in the office of NBD. Josanne Reeves, the mayor's office, council member LaChee Harris, self district council president Loretta Scott, council member and north of the northeast district, Michael Patterson, Dana Miller from Neighborhood and Business Development, Carol Wheeler from Neighborhood and Business Development, Gary Kirkmeyer, Commissioner of Neighborhood and Business Development, city clerk Hazel Washington, council member at large Jack Guitarriz, Kate May, I don't remember the name of your new office, I apologize, council member at large Malik Evans, council member east district Mary Lupien, council member at large Mitch Gruber, and both council member who was a PO and vice president Lightfoot had emergencies that came up, so they weren't able to attend today.
Okay, thank you, and thank you all for being here today. Henry, if you want to give a little, little background, because I was asking BJ, I said, okay, we're doing this, why? But I remembered the meeting that the mayor had told us about, well, he reminded me of the meeting, the mayor had told us about this was forthcoming, so if you would tell us about that.
Sure, sure, we'll do. And I guess before that even, I want to pass it over to Gary, Commissioner Kirkmeyer, or any others want to do any opening statement, then I'll go right into it.
You know, really, this is Henry and Innovations project, so you know, we've been blessed recently with Henry rejoining NBD as a grant manager and research coordinator, which really is significantly helping us in a lot of respects and a lot of ways already. But this is a project that Innovations took on, and I'm not sure if it was at the request of the mayor, but took it on. And, and it really, it helps NBD, and I'm sure it's going to be informative to council, because it answers some of the questions that sometimes are often falsely perceived in other ways. And I think that when we get, when we actually get our hands on factual hard data, it can show you how effective that we can use that data to tell a story that, well, it might not seem to reflect somebody's personal experience. It certainly is reflective of the, the large population of data that Henry and Kate and others have worked with. So this is their show, and we're here just to support it in any way that questions come up around evictions, and Carol and Dana, same way.
Absolutely. So I'm going to start screen sharing, bring this up. Can you guys see this okay?
Yes.
There we go. So, yeah, so this started, I think, over a year ago. And we had been involved with some of the conversations with the citywide tenants union and some of the other community conversations going on around evictions and gentrification and some of these issues. And given some of the other work I had done approaching the state for access to data, I thought to myself, like, let's go right to the source and, and see if we can get access to the data and better understand really what's happening around this issue. So we were able to work with, well, first we went to the county, and the county referred us up to the state, because the data system they use at the courts is actually a state-owned data system operated by the New York State Unified Court System. And so we went at the county suggestion up there and went through a data sharing request process, and it was actually pretty intensive and a lot of security and personally identifying information. They want to make sure that stuff is, is really kept secure and not shared. So I was the only authorized city staff person to actually receive and work with the data. We received just shy of 10 years' worth of eviction court records. Was pretty messy data overall, and that's something I'll touch on a little bit later. So there were definitely some limitations. But yeah, however, very big and useful dataset and did provide a lot of good information, as, as you guys probably see and will go through. The other piece I'll mention too is, of course, this is only legal evictions that go through the court system. We know unfortunately there are many, many cases of illegal evictions and threats of evictions that take place in our community, and those would not be captured here, of course. And so this is going to populate a forthcoming report with these findings and just some, some brief write-up around them that will be coming out sometime this summer, early fall. And again, I think it's helpful, especially it's a hot issue, a lot of community conversation important, that we ground those, those conversations in the, in the data and the facts and, and move forward with common understanding. So wanted to just quickly review the actual eviction lifecycle, just for those who may not be as familiar with it, and I certainly wasn't when I got into this. And it was important for me to kind of do this diagramming so I could get my head on it. So this is our eviction process as of today, and this is, of course, with the new eviction laws that were put in place in June last year. So all in all, it can be up now, up to a 63-day process and no, and no shorter than a 38-day process, and that's significantly lengthened than, than what it was previously. So the, you know, and the rep comes due by five or more days, the landlord presents a 14-day notice to pay. At the conclusion of that 14 days, they can officially serve the tenant with a summons to the, the hearing. That hearing is scheduled 10 to 17 days after that service is served, and the hearing takes place. And there's that initial hearing, then there's the actual trial part, which takes place afterwards. That can be scheduled up to 14 days later at the request of the tenant, and the judge is actually required to grant that if the tenant requests it. However, they could rule on the case immediately at the hearing if the tenant does not request that 14-day period. And then at that trial, they will either dismiss the case or rule a judgment in favor of the landlord. The, but the landlord can then with that judgment get a warrant from the sheriff's marshal, and that will get posted, that could get posted that very same day. And then that tenant sees that notice and, and they are notified of a 14-to-7-day, 14-to-17-day period, at which point they will be physically evicted from, from the premises. So importantly also, even up until the very last day, the 63 days, the tenant can now pay the landlord all the way up to that final day and stop the eviction. So they, they have that power, and that was granted as of the new laws. So now going back, all the data we're going to be looking at is as of the old eviction laws. So just in comparison, looking at the old process, it could be as short as 11 days and, and a maximum length of 35 days. So the new laws basically doubled the length of the process. Also, the other really important piece is the landlord is not required to stop the eviction if the tenant offers to pay. They can, as soon as they've got the judgment, they can, you know, move it forward and just have the sheriff evict, evict the tenant, even if they do come up with the money after that judgment's been served. So it's just important to note the, the context of the data. So we are seeing this data, the data we're looking at, the results we're looking at is in that old, the old laws. So here are the kind of the main phases again of the eviction case. So, and this is, I kind of use this diagram to show there's a funnel where at different points in the process, cases are removed because they either pay, they're settled, the landlord withdraws them, a variety of things. So you start with a ton of cases filed. 28% of cases filed are, never make it to a judgment, and that's because the tenant pays, they voluntarily move out, or the judge dismisses the case. Once cases get, another 28% get to a judgment, but never get a warrant. So those cases are likely where the tenant did end up paying the landlord, and the landlord decided to stop the process and let them continue living there. So then the remaining, like, 44% do get a warrant. We aren't able to tell with the data how many of those warrants were actually executed, and that's a limitation with the data that I'm going to be following up to, to make some suggestions that we really improve the data quality, because that's, that's a really key feature we're not able to look at. I do expect though that the vast majority of those warrants were probably executed. So looking at caseload over time, this chart with the, the nice warm colors here, again, breaks out those kind of three main, main phases of the case. The yellow where they were, the case was filed but then dismissed or withdrawn, orange where that was filed and a judgment was served or issued by the judge, but no warrant, and then red where there was a judgment and a warrant. And then they all stack together, you see. So you see that over time, there was a slight, you know, increase over time in total cases per year, and the distribution of these kind of outcomes was pretty consistent over time. We also see that in 2019, there was a pretty significant drop in cases. And, you know, the hypothesis there is, of course, that with, with word of the new laws coming and landlords were, were worried, wanted to see how the laws played out, so they, maybe they didn't, they didn't file evictions, maybe they deferred some of those evictions to wait and see. I think we want to get more, request more data to really see how that played out, and we're going to do that moving forward to get additional data for the rest of 2019 and into 2020. We also see that there are seasonality in evictions. The summer months definitely are the peak. July and August, we see the most evictions taking place. Generally pretty low in the winter months, but there is a surge in January that we see, and that might be due to many different factors. My hypothesis is that it's kind of after the holiday season, and landlords have maybe been a little bit lenient about families and not wanting to kick them out during the holiday seasons, and then January 1st happens, and they say, okay, sorry, we got a eviction. But I think we'd like to do more follow-up with landlords and tenants to, to better understand some of this. Looking at those outcomes over time, we're also seeing that landlords are less and less successful at getting a judgment against their tenants. And it would also be interesting to understand why this might be. It's not immediately clear. You know, the law didn't change until 2019, so why is there this long-term trend of landlords being less successful in, in court? Looking at the types of cases, we see that the vast, vast, vast majority of cases are for non-payment of rent, 93%. So that's obviously sad and unfortunate, and I think is really an indication of the, the economic issues we're having as a city, the poverty crisis that we're having as a city. A lot of our eviction issues are just driven by inability to pay. The remaining 7% are, a vast majority of those are holdover cases. So those would be cases such as when somebody is continuing to stay in the apartment after the lease has expired. That can include a month-to-month tenant. It can also include breach of lease terms or a tenant who is causing nuisance or, or hazards. So that's the, that makes up that other 7%. There are a very small amount of other cases where, such as the tenant actually suing the landlord for illegal lockout, but I think that was only about 20 cases in 10 years. All right. Looking at the value of the non-payment and the amount that the landlord is seeking from, from the tenant, we see that it had, even controlling for inflation, it's increased by about $100. Overall, pretty, not a huge change in the value that they're seeking. As of 2019, it was about $1,500. And when we look at the distribution of that, we see it kind of centers around that, like, $1,000 to, you know, $1,200, $1,500 in terms of the, kind of the average. So I compared that here on the next slide. I was able to get, you know, the addresses for each of the, each of the apartments where the, this eviction case was filed and compare, using census data to see what the median rent in that neighborhood or census tract was, just to get a sense for how many, about the value in terms of months of rent that we're talking about. So it looks like it's about two months rent that landlords are seeking from, from tenants. Again, that's a, a big approximation, but it's, it's, so it's not that they're getting six months no payment and then evicting, it seems about two months value. Now, that could mean also that maybe they are behind, you know, they, they pay most of their rent, but they're behind by $100, and that $100 every month continues to add up. It's, it's unclear about those kinds of dynamics, but we do know that it's about the value of two months rent in terms of dollars and months. We're able to map it up with our property data to look at different features about the properties where these evictions are taking place. So compared to their makeup of the overall rental units, two-unit structures are overrepresented in the eviction filings. So there seems to be, and it seems overall that smaller units are, smaller building units are more common to be evicted. So that's an interesting trend, and I think, you know, a lot of times we hear about the, you know, big landlords or big complexes, but it looks like in terms of, you know, there's overrepresentation of the smaller two-unit buildings in the caseload, and I think it's important that we look at that as well. So yeah, again, looking at evictions at the same properties, we see that overall, aside from one-unit structures, the smaller the, the building, the more often they evict per unit. So, and you know, there's some, you know, the hypothesis there that I have is that a lot of smaller unit buildings are owned by smaller owners, they own fewer properties in general. They have tighter, smaller, they're a smaller, they're basically small business, they have tight cash flows, and they just can't, can't absorb as much, you know, delayed rent payments as maybe a bigger owner can. But again, there's some, these are some dynamics that we'd hope to continue to explore. Looking at landlords who appear again and again in the eviction files, we do see that our, our top 10 filing landlords make up 16% of all filings, so that's a pretty big portion. A lot of that, though, is just due to the fact that our big landlords own a lot of units, and just by nature of that, they do a lot of filings. When you look at the trend on a per-unit basis, the, it's actually the the smaller landlords who evict more frequently per unit. The more units you own, the less likely you are to evict on average. So that's kind of an interesting trend against, we hear, I think it, it requires some more nuanced discussion and more nuanced understanding. Especially, you know, a lot, again, a lot of that focuses on some of these bigger owners, but I think it's those, it appears that the smaller owners, as mom and pop owners, sometimes are potentially filing a larger portion of the evictions. We also got to look at code complaints and code violations associated with these eviction cases. And less than 3% of these eviction cases were associated with a code complaint within 60 days before or after the case filing. So I think that is an interesting stat. We hear, you know, we often hear a lot about properties and, and landlords who are not taking care of the property. But at the very least, the, the tenants or the neighbors don't seem to be calling in those complaints to, to our code inspection team. It's not showing up in the data, and then maybe that's something we can do moving forward to really help continue to educate the community about the importance of calling 301 to report code issues. We also looked at tenants who, who showed up in the, in the caseload frequently. So overall, the vast majority only showed up one time in the case, case data. However, those people who, who were, had an eviction, had at least two evictions filed against them, made up about 15% of, of the people in the dataset. And then those people who had two or more evictions in the, in those eight years, they made up a quarter of all eviction filings. So there definitely seems to be a small subset of kind of frequent flyer tenants as well that are making up a good portion of the, of the caseload. So, good tenants, we've got good tenants, we've got bad tenants, we've got good landlords, we've got bad landlords, and we've got a very nuanced situation, I think, as, as like this always are. Finally, we've done a little bit of mapping of the data. We're able to aggregate the evictions to the census block group geography, which are, you know, like, small portions of, of a neighborhood to look at, you know, where are their hotspots of evictions happening? And we tried to control on the right side, we see that's judgments per rental unit, so that's controlling for the total number of rental units in that area. So that's, that's important to say, you know, there might have been, you know, 50 evictions in an area, but it has, you know, 4,000 units. So that's actually a pretty low eviction rate, whereas another area might have 50 units, but only, might have 50 evictions, but 75 units, and that's a really high eviction rate, so it's important to make that distinction. Overall, we see that the, the geography of, of evictions, and this is specifically showing judgment, so cases that were won by the landlord essentially. The geography pretty closely matches the geography of a lot of our other socioeconomic issues such as poverty, income, vacancy, crime, you know, that, it's unfortunate for, for us who do a lot of mapping of this kind of stuff. That's a very familiar shape and mirrors the crescent that we all, we all hear about a lot. So we see that, that reflected in the, the geography of evictions, and I think that further kind of emphasizes the, the pretty strong linkage to income issues and, and the fact that the vast, vast, 93% of these cases are evictions for non-payment of rent, and emphasizes the economic challenges our neighborhoods are experiencing. So, as I said, I'm finishing this up, we're hoping to get some more, the latest data from the state. That may be a lengthy process, so it may not be able to be included in the report, but the report, I hope to get out I hope to look a little more into a couple more topics, some that I've talked about. Like to look to see about bank evictions and how prevalent they are here. Like to, to see about whether the dynamics have changed and what's happened in 2020, and especially with COVID-19, the dynamics there are going to be very, very interesting. Also want to do more mapping to look at slicing, dicing the data and some other ways to look at geography. Other than that, that is my presentation. I'm happy to answer your questions.
Okay, thank you, Henry. Maria, I know that you have a question.
Yeah, thank you for, for all that research. One thing that I think gets left out, just because it's so hard to track, is evictions that are really because of a non-renewal of a month-to-month lease, and so many of the anecdotal stories that I hear have to do with that. And, you know, I was thinking, you know, around the statistic you had with the 97.7% that had no code violations, that sometimes the apartments that are kept up as well are also the same ones that are keeping people on month-to-month leases so they can easily get them out. I'm wondering if there's any, any way that we can get more of a handle on what that looks like in Rochester?
Well, it's unfortunately not something we can see through this data, and we'd have to look at other data sources potentially. It does appear, again, if they, if they were on a month-to-month lease and they refused to, to leave when that month-to-month lease was terminated.
That'd be a holdover.
That would be a holdover case, and we're seeing very few of those. But again, I think there's definitely a power dynamic in, at play with, you know, with your landlord, and I think a lot of people voluntarily just leave when they're, and they don't really know their rights or, or the process.
Right. That's something I'd personally like to see, but I have no idea how we would collect it.
It, it would be difficult to collect data, and because if they're not entering in the eviction system, I, I don't know how you would collect it, right? I mean, I guess we could solicit landlords and, as to whether or not they're a month-to-month landlord or a lease landlord, and maybe voluntarily they would tell us. But even that, I don't, I don't know how you would get numbers thereafter of turnover.
I mean, I, I like the idea of, of possibly doing a survey of landlords, as long as it's anonymous, they may be able to answer some things and give us some good data points. And I was speaking to a larger landlord the other day, and it was interesting when you said that the evictions seemed to be lower on average for the larger ones, but the conversation that I had is because, when I was speaking to them, they said there would be more evictions, it's just that it's much more costly for them to evict than, than just to try to figure something out with that particular. Then, then just to try to figure something out with that particular person. And that the cost of the turnover and the cost of the filing and the cost of all these things, that there probably would be more evictions, but because They would just rather figure it out, it, it actually ends up being lower in cost that way. So I don't know if that's necessarily
That I've heard that landlords say the same thing, that, that they'll wait until the end of the lease so they don't have to deal with evictions, but that the people are still being displaced.
Right. So that's, that's what I'm saying. So there, it, it's hard because I, I think there would be, number one, I think there would be a lot more evictions for Non-payment of rent than what's listed here, but then there's also just the non-renewal. That's also not captured necessarily here in terms of the end outcome of displacement. So my point in saying that is one, I think that this number could probably be even larger in terms of displacement. But the other thing is, is that I think it would be interesting to hear from some of these landlords and even the larger ones That may be able to give us some good insight in terms of the decisions that they're making.
Yeah, I mean, you know, with the landlord summit activity, we have a, a pretty significant database of emails for landlords. I think it's in excess of 400. So, you know, reaching out and surveying, we're, we're, we're still talking about having a virtual landlord summit. So, you know, we might have to reach out anyway. And last week we began the process of creating a committee, if you will, of, of the landlord association leaders and leadership To continue conversations. So we, we can, we can pursue a different path here to try to solicit some information that probably you can't get otherwise.
I have a follow-up question. What power do we as a city have to require reporting of that kind of data from our landlords?
None that I'm aware. I mean, we can't, you know, we can't differentiate what, whether your tenancy term is month-to-month or lease, we can't mandate leases.
No, I mean, like, you know, how many non-renewal of leases do they do in a year, something like that?
Yeah, I think it's probably, probably the only way to get that stuff is to solicit some feedback and, you know, like Jackie said, maybe because it's anonymous, maybe, Maybe they'll share it, you know, willingly.
Can it be made part of the CBO application to disclose information? Or if we were to contemplate that landlord registry or something that I, I don't know. I mean, I know we talked about it a few different times, it's not something we, the building registry, I don't remember what we called it, but If we ever contemplated something like that, could that be part of what we solicit as part of the renewal of their licensing or
Well, I mean, listen, we could talk about it, right? So once we get a group together, we can keep talking about those things. I'm really, really cognizant, as I'm sure you all are. On how the laws of recent have really gone one way. And, and, and whether it's equitable or not, I'm not going to judge that. I'm just saying that we feel the pressure that comes from that. And I think that we need to hear people's both sides of it and, and then maybe if collectively, if, if people want to go in that direction, for us to add it Is not a big deal. For us to mandate it at this time, when there's been so many mandates just imposed recently, I think it's probably not a good time.
At least for the landlord group, you know, the, the Under One Roof Coalition, they, you know, they themselves said it's only 1% of what they How they handle, you know, tenants that they want to Vacate. But what I see, you know, just, just from the people that I talked to is that a lot of those non-renewal leases Happen with the landlords that aren't doing as good a job as the ones, you know, that we're normally in contact with. And so I wonder for the, the ones that are putting pressure on us, you know, if it might be less of a lift for them, but the ones that we really want to capture. It, it might be worth the effort.
Yeah, again, we can talk about it and talk with the landlord groups to see if, you know, what they'd be willing to share. It's, you know, we, we also hear the stories of the landlord paying tenants To leave under certain situations as well. So there, there's lots of variables here. It's not just an eviction because rent's not being paid sometimes. It's a Sometimes there's other problems that are, you know, people are trying to solve by means of displacement.
This is Councilman P. I'm sorry I'm late, I had to help my mother-in-law fix a tire. Quick question, if I'm, I'm sorry if I missed it. I have a, a lot of neighbors in one particular street that's dealing with a house with Drug dealing prostitution. We've already reached out to the landlord. He stated he cannot do anything due to the Moratorium on evictions. What in that case can be done?
Well, I mean, certainly if people are violating the law, I hope it's being reported to the authorities. And, and I'm sure that they'll do due diligence to investigate that. That's, that's not really our bag, but our service centers would work collectively with the RPD in the service centers to make sure there's attention given to that. So while they may not be able to evict them, you know, we, we can certainly call attention to the issue and see if we can mitigate it.
Yes, police have been there multiple times, they have not been able to arrest anybody. But they see it's happening, they just can't do anything about it until They themselves are able to purchase drugs or solicit prostitution, and they have not been able to do that. So the, the neighbors themselves are getting involved very heavily. Going out to the vehicles themselves, putting themselves at risk just because they're tired of it. It's kind of like one of those terrible situations.
Yeah, we understand. I, I just don't, I don't want to speak for the chief.
Gary, when did you say that, I know that you said you were trying to pull them together, that you already had a meeting or that you have one upcoming with the landlord coalition leaders?
We had the first meeting last week as we did with the tenants union. I mean, it's not our first meeting with them, but it's the first meeting going forward. And so we have a better idea now. There was one of the groups that has disbanded since the last time that I've been out there to present with them. So now we have a good handle on actually how many organized structures there are. So we're going to pare down the, the committee to have one Member from each participate going forward. So we have, you know, equity in the process. And then we have to get back to the other tenant union representatives like IBERO and Rochester Refugee Resettlement. That we engaged in C-Rise Phase Two to make sure that they're part of the conversation as well.
Henry, I, I'm wondering, a couple of years ago, Matthew Desmond came here to talk about Evicted. I'm sure it's, it's a book a lot of us on the phone have read or referenced. And I recall the end of that meeting, there'd be You know, his book is just full of the data specifically, like, like the data you report. I think he focused on Milwaukee and it seemed at the end of that meeting that there was very little Data here in Rochester. So I'm guessing that's part of why you scoped this the way you did. It feels like there's, there's a link to the, what the point Mary was making where essentially a lot of, there are a lot of ways people are evicted kind of under the radar, if you will. And I'm wondering, were you able to, to look at people like Desmond and best practices to scope your study? I mean, did you use all the tools available or is this something that's unique to Rochester for some reason?
No, I definitely, you know, read Desmond's book and, and looked at the resources there. And it is unfortunate, aside from New York City. There are basically no public access to this kind of data Throughout New York State, where it is more accessible in some other states. So that's certainly, I mean, just a broad thing that we should probably all be pushing for is better access to this data. And also I'd push for better quality of this data because it's missing quite a lot of important features that would help answer More of these questions, you know, we don't have people's date of birth, we don't have, you know, that would help us link People and cases across time easily, things like that. But yes, I, I think we used as many tricks and tools as we had at our disposal here. You know, linking it to our other data sources. But the, the New York State system that this is coming out of is, is overall pretty poor. The data, data quality needs to be enforced better, it needs some fields added to it. And I think there needs to be a more Easier way for us to get access to it and, you know, folks
Thanks. So, so I, I, I kind of assumed that, that you had used every tool available, but there were still some tools missing. And I guess that's part of my, I guess that's what I want to know is, I mean, what is, what are, what are you going to be using? What is the utility of, of this report? What are the actions that we can take? I feel like one of the things that's very frustrating about the housing conversations that happen in this community all the time Is that we as legislators are looked to, to help to fix some of this stuff when so much of it falls in the hands of the court and judicial system. And I'm, I'm wondering, what, what are we going to be able to do with this data to help leverage some of the work that I know Jackie's been doing on a housing court that we can kind of leverage some of our state representatives? What do you have in mind for some of that?
Let me speak to that real quick. Let me speak to that. So, you know, Councilmember Ortiz is involved with this as well, you know, this justice for all effort that, you know, hopefully is going to continue. It, it's actually, that's what it's all about, right, is to, to see this whole landscape of this environment and displacement in general and And sharpening ways that we currently have and improving data that we currently have, improving systems that currently house the data and access. And so, you know, the courts are engaged in that process, not just to start a housing court. But for that exact purpose that Henry's detailing in the data that we were so lucky and blessed to be able to get our hands on because it's not easy to get your hands on it. So, you know, all, all you can do from a data perspective is say, you know, if we had this, it would be great. And then whoever owns that Data, populating that data, you have to try to work with them and impress upon them how valuable it would be to society. If somehow we can reconstruct or enhance a system that collects that data. Because data is just about putting something in a field. If you have the right fields and you put the data in, getting it out and doing things with it, that's easy. So, you know, I think that those conversations are ongoing. There is certainly a well statewide organized effort for the justice for all effort. And, you know, we have a lot of representation locally and involved with that. Sorry, Henry, go ahead.
No, I think you said it pretty well there. I think a lot of my, you know, I want to work with the, you know, certainly council and the NBD team as we kind of Formulate recommendations to come out of this. A lot of mine, I, I'm still kind of struggling with, you know, the fact that You know, the 93% are for failure to pay. It's just a hard question to answer. How do we deal with that? And that's, you know, kind of comes back to poverty and And income issues and age-old issues, problems that we're, we're dealing with as a city.
Yeah. No, sorry, go ahead, go ahead. I didn't mean to cut you off, Henry.
Yeah, just, just to say, I think, I think more thought needs to get put into how this translates into action and Policy.
Well, I, and I guess all I was going to say is it, it just feels to me like, like so often we have these conversations and we're, we're, we're really nibbling around the edges when it comes to The kind of legislative tools that we have for some of this stuff as a municipality versus the judicial system versus New York State. And I just want to make sure that we can, at some point, you know, as, as we start to have some clarity on the data, figure out what are the ways that we can really Influence the judicial system? What are the levers that we can pull as, as a municipality? But on top of that, what are some of the ways that we can address the, the, the very thing that you just mentioned, Henry? If we know that there's, you know, I think you said there's about 15% Of individuals who are repeatedly being evicted and we have, we're investing tons of money in the financial empowerment centers. What are the ways that we as a city can, can link those folks together to get some, you know, some free resources and some, and some opportunities there? And, and so that's the kind of programmatic side. And then, and then legislatively, how, how do we push at a state and judicial level? I'd love some clarity. I'd love some guidance from NBD on some, on some opportunities that come out of this report.
Yeah. So some of that stuff, we've already begun, right, with the community wealth building effort with case managers and financial empowerment and Specifically, what, one of the things that we did directly related to this data is We tried to recognize who our biggest filers were And tried to enhance that effort by putting more funds into it to get another caseworker, this is through the City Rise Grant. To specifically work with that organization to help them strengthen their ability to prevent foreclosure. They, I mean, they're doing better than a lot of other authorities, but, you know, this gives them additional tool And mechanism for people to get some assistance and guidance so that they not only prevent that, but hopefully proactively prepare themselves to prevent it in the future. So, you know, we're doing things like that. It's, it's incremental gains. But it's always, we're always going to have a, you know, we, we need to have more jobs, we need to have more well-paying jobs. It's, it's a collective thing that, that causes the, the rent shortages.
I have a, a question. Is there any way to link The evictions to rise in, in home value and property values? Is that, do you have the ability to, to do that?
Yes, we could.
So it'd be interesting because, you know, we, we hear about gentrification. It'd be interesting to see the, the, if, if it's reflected in In the court data. You know, I suspect anecdotally, it's definitely related to the non-renewal of lease. But I'd like to see that if that's possible. It's, you know,
Yeah, I think, I think we can definitely do that. We could, we could look at assessed value of the property. And then we could also bring in some other outside data sources to look at property value.
Yeah.
Would these answers be in the report or were those becoming separately to the council?
Oh, they, we could put that in the report.
Yeah, I think to, to Councilmember, to Mitch's point. That, you know, it's, it sounds like this is kind of systemic and it would be really helpful to see how we can use this data to, to craft solutions.
So this is, this is very, it's intriguing, certainly, and doesn't say what I thought I was going to say in a, in a lot of ways. But to me, it does all still seem to get down to it with a number like that, but failing to pay the rent. When you look at all the other elements, even if we look at the issue of the increase in property value and evictions. Well, what goes with that is the rent's going up and they can't afford to pay the higher rent. So it always comes back to Money. It comes back to people's ability to pay. But our solutions don't deal with that. I mean, our, our solutions take us in a different direction. So I, and I'm not sure how, and we talked about the Financial Empowerment Center and all of that, but It, it really is a much, much larger kind of need That we're facing with this. We can, we can do this and, but you said nibble around the edges and all of that, but It still comes down to people having the money to pay the rent. So are there any other questions or comments or Anything along those lines? Oh, come on.
Mr. Patterson, nothing?
No, the only thing
Somebody say nobody gonna say the rent's too damn high?
No, that's what I was gonna say. I was gonna say, where's Jerry? Yeah, where's my man Jerry McMillan? The rent's too high. No, but I, I was just going to say that, again, you have to take a systemic approach. I mean, I agree with the nibbling around the edges and I say this to people all the time, less than half of Americans can come up with $400 for an emergency. So it's, it's a fine, and that's last year's Federal Reserve number. So it's, it's a, it's a bigger issue than just Evictions. So you can't talk about evictions in, in the vacuum without talking about Things that will rise people's income and then targeting the people that are Evicting the most and then making sure that they have access to resources, resources being money and doing that. And then also getting One of the most popular things United Way had, and I, and, and it was a fund Couple of months ago, went very quickly, money to help just give people money for rent. It was a basic thing, you know, so You, you gotta, it, it's, it's a financial thing. I agree with the president. And you, you gotta have conversations about that because you just can't talk about evictions and, and isolation. You can do all these different things. Can you do this to the landlords? Can you do this? Look, landlords need their rent and people need money to be able to pay their rent. So you gotta look at the larger issues in order to, in order to kind of solve the problem.
Which takes us to July, this cliff that's gonna occur. When the moratorium against evictions ends. And, you know, we know that the county is sort of the, the, the chief honcho with this kind of stuff as far as homelessness. But I believe people are going to look more and more at us. I don't know what options we have to address it. But if it gets as I don't know what options we have to address it, but if it gets as bad as some are expecting it will be, because regretfully, although some people may have gotten stimulus payments and even higher levels of unemployment and all of that, it doesn't mean that they paid their rent or saved that money. So I, I really am, um, concerned about the numbers that are gonna be piling up in the courts with the evictions coming with the end of the moratorium. And I don't know what kind of options we have to address it, but I expect that people are going to be looking, looking to us as though we do.
And I guess, and I guess to the point that, uh, that Henry was making before about the, the, uh, insufficiency of the data, we can't, we're not going to be able to see any of this in real time, right? I mean, the beauty of what you just put in front of us is that we now can actually match up some hard numbers of what's happened over the last decade. But the problem with this stuff moving forward is that it's going to go back to being anecdotal. And we, and we all know that we hear, we hear, uh, stories that prove kind of both sides, that landlords are the victim, the tenants are the victim. And I think what we all know is that in the end, there is so much, there's so many individuals right now who are not going to have money to pay rent and we're not going to be able to see it in real time. We're just going to hear about it. That's, that's a frustration.
Well, my frustration is even though we did hear it in real time, what are we going to do about it? We don't have the ability to address that. Who does?
Yeah, let me, let me take it from there. The federal government has the ability to address it. And colleagues, I would submit to you all humbly that we are detailing a problem that though we may have a great concern about, it is outside of our scope to effectively deal with. This isn't, you know, look, fundamentally, what do we need in this country? We need Section Eight for All or some equivalent thereof. The Heroes Act has $100 billion in emergency stabilization funds. So if, if we are serious about doing something, the only thing that we can actually do is advocate strenuously for the federal government to let loose with the money. That's it, folks, because there is nothing that the city of Rochester is going to do to, to meet the tremendous need that is going to appear. Full stop.
So, so let's not forget that we did, you know, we did allocate a pretty substantial amount in the COVID funding. I know it's probably not going to cover the entire gap and we're hoping to get another funding stream here. Phase, we, we thought we were going to get a phase two funding stream, but it went to the state. But, um, you know, both ESG and CDBG, we dedicated substantial amounts for rent relief, for rent assistance. So, you know, we're, that'll be teed up and ready to go. And we'll certainly be engaging landlords along the way and tenants along the way to make sure they know it's available. Um, and it's through the same agencies that have been providing that kind of service right along. Um, Carol can speak more to that if you need to know more about that. But, you know, don't forget, we just passed that COVID funding plan that was significantly dedicated to trying to cover some of that gap, some of that.
Which, which goes directly to my point because those are federal dollars that came down to us and we decided to spend them in this manner. Other communities will not.
Not, not those. They didn't decide. No, Mike.
No, 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 no. Those, those are Kansas Act dollars. Those came from the federal government. Right. And we decided to push it out through that.
Didn't, I believe that came down under categories like ESG and HOPA and all of that.
That's, e- even if it did, it's still federal funds.
But it wasn't us who decided where to spend it.
Oh, no, no, no. That's, that's not true. We, we, well, the ESG plan was a community plan based on the collective efforts of the community organizations involved with that landscape. That CDBG plan was a plan developed.
That was ours.
Uh, that, that dedicated funds, knowing that ESG wasn't going to cover a very large gap that we anticipated. So, yeah, we did try to offset that with some things that we were in direct control of.
Right. But with the Heroes Act funding, a lot of that fund, those funding streams are designated into ESG and other ordinance and other elements of pre-existing funding. In the end, it's going to come down to the federal government making a decision and us advocating that they do it. The need is great. You know, you've got one in four Americans that have lost their job. Are you kidding me? You know, that, that's not anything that one little municipality is going to fix, ladies and gentlemen. We still have a state that's talking about maybe grabbing back 20% of the money that they gave us, creating a budget hole. So, look, this is a, this is a federal emergency. This is a federal obligation. We need to advocate to the federal government to come across with the money. And then we use the money appropriately to meet the needs of the people or they use it appropriately to meet the needs of the people, all in good. But that is a challenge and, you know, us trying to figure out how we tease the legislation to get the landlord to be a nicer guy, um, to give the tenant a break, that ain't the issue, that ain't the problem. The problem is the tenant ain't got the money. The tenant ain't got the money because the tenant ain't got a job. Okay, so how long is a landlord supposed to let you stay for free? Because the landlord got a bill to pay too. So everybody gotta pay, everybody gotta pay if they're going to stay. That even includes the landlord. If you don't pay, you don't keep the property. So at some point in time, that money's got to show up. If you can't get the money through work, we have a global pandemic. This is the time to shake the tree and get the money. That's what we do. I'm done.
Mike, to your, to your point about the money, um, you know, even before COVID, our community has suffered from a, a high rate of poverty, you know, which has been, just like Mitch had, um, Councilmember Mitch had mentioned that, you know, it's been something that we've been experiencing um, in the past, as you guys all know.
Well, I agree. And, and I hate to say it, but you know what? And, and quite frankly, and a- as the federal government didn't give a poop for all intents and purposes. At this point in time, they do. Well, no, not really, but they may because the, the need is great and diverse. So this opportunity exists. It's their job. We need to advocate that they do their job. Um, we can't print money. We can't run a deficit. The federal government can do both. This is the time for them to do both, to take care of the needs of our people. Full stop. I ain't going to go citizens. I'm saying our people. Where we are, you're here, however you're here, you're our people. We need to take care of you. That's what we do. That's what we need to do. But we don't have the ability as a municipality to do that on our own.
Mary, I see that you have some suggestions and then, Jose?
Um, Mike, I hear you. I think we're all, uh, you know, want to demand from the federal government what they owe us in this pandemic and to take care of our people. But I don't see it as mutually, as mutually exclusive. It's both and. You know, we, we have some, some levers that we can pull at the city level and we have some advocating to do at the state and, and federal level. Um, some of the things that, you know, just want to put out there, you know, um, some, talking about the, uh, the evictions, you know, that happen with non-renewal of lease. Something like Good Cause Eviction Protection would be able to put those on the map. You know, to be able to measure them and prevent, prevent evictions from happening for, uh, you know, no, no real good reason other than they want to get the tenants out for, you know, to raise the rent or to, you know, to rehab the apartment or just to, to turn it over. There's a lot of different reasons that, that landlords, um, for, for good and bad reasons, you know, use, use, um, a non-renewal of lease. But if we put in the Good Cause Eviction Protection, then all of these have to go through the courts if they want to get someone out. Then we can measure them and then we can, um, you know, do something about it. This other idea, you know, it's been talked about before, uh, and maybe it seems radical, but I'm going to put it out there. Something like, uh, a commuter tax, uh, half a percent or 1% on people who work in the city but don't live here. Um, the research has been done that it's like a billion dollars in wages that get extracted from Rochester every year. Just a half a percent of that would be $50 million. And what could we do with that money to help people, uh, pay their rent, uh, to help people, you know, to even help landlords make repairs that need to be done? I think, you know, looking outside of the box at other streams of income, um, you know, it's, it's something that we can do.
Jose?
Um, a couple of different things was accessory dwelling units I keep reading about in other states. Um, the houses are being able to convert my two-car garage with windows in it to a, uh, you know, 20 by 20 little apartment house for some people. It's just a lot of these things, this can't either be done or not monetarily available. But the biggest thing to me, I, I'm a huge advocate for the city trying to help more homeowners. We've had tons of houses that we can convert into, uh, homeowner occupied homes if we push harder than just the $3,000 grant. Um, we could really do a lot of work for our low-batter income borrowers. It's, it's tough. And everything Mary says, I, I listen, I, I talk to Mary all the time about this kind of stuff. And it's, it's a really tough problem that we are faced with as a city. And I, I really think the biggest thing to overcome evictions is for people to own their home. That, that's, that's my big thing. I know not everybody wants to own their home, but a lot of people do. Most people do. That's my two cents.
Okay.
Okay, I thought I was done. I'm not. Mary, I hear you. And dealing with that 7% for the, that are the holdovers that are for the eviction, nobody's necessarily opposed to that, but when 93% of your evictions are for non-payment of rent and we have a point in time where we're going to see even more people evicted for non-payment of rent, the issue is money to support the rent payment. If we, you know, nothing wrong with addressing the 70%, but if we can find a way to address the 93%, that's, that's an awful lot of good to be done too. And the way, and that's straight up, give us more money. Um, and that goes back to the federal demand. Uh, the commuter tax, hey, I'm willing to consider anything. Yonkers does it. If Yonkers can do it, why not us? Um, but, you know, and, 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 you know, and again, hey, we are all Democrats. So there might be some Republicans complaining right now, but so what? Um, I'm sorry, did I say that out loud?
You said that out loud.
Yeah, okay. I made it too. So, so there it is. Um, but, you know, look, again, folks, we're all good people, we're all leading hearts liberals or even more. And, you know, we're there for the people, but this is a federal requirement. And if we believe in the notion that housing is a right, then the responsibility for meeting that right rests with the federal government. And until the legislation changes, the right doesn't actually exist. Here's an opportunity to push and advocate for a benefit. And the wonderful thing about Americans is that once you give them a benefit, it, you will catch hell trying to take it away from them. So if we get out here and we, we advocate for the Heroes Act, we push for these additional dollars to support not just our communities, but all communities because poor folks live everywhere. They don't just live in the city of Rochester. They live everywhere. We help poor folks. We help this nation. We help a ton of children. We do good all over the place. And if we get to a point where folks are only paying 30% of their, of their gross income for, for rent, effectively Section Eight for All or thereby, that's a fabulous thing. So, I mean, but that's, but us trying to nibble around the corners to make drastic change, maybe after we get past this, yeah, but the opportunity is now and the need is greater than it will ever be again. I'm done for real this time.
For real? Okay.
I'm done with my sermon. I'll be passing around the plate.
You guys, nothing. Uh, Henry?
Amen.
Thank you so much for the presentation. I know you didn't come here to talk about what we're talking about right now. But it is to, uh, by way of helping you to see how impactful the work that you're doing is and can be, tying the data to the actual actions and measures that need to be taken to make the data work, to, to make it worth something. So I thank you and Commissioner Kirkmire, I thank you as well. You're always on point with this stuff and we appreciate that. If there, are there any further questions or comments? If there are none, I'd like to bid you all adieu and thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
Bye, everyone.
Henry, great presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.